We are going to get started. The first thing that we're going to do is stand and do our pledge of allegiance. So, board members and guests, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any guests with us tonight? I think I saw Teri Harmon running around out there. Welcome, Teri. It's nice to see you tonight. We are going to go right into...I need somebody up here to adopt the agenda, please. Make a motion. Who would like to do that this evening?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Very, very nice. We are going to move into one of my favorite parts of the board meeting, and that is hearing from our superintendent. So, Dr. Carpenter, it's coming your way.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you a lot, Madam Chair and Board Members. For the benefit of our audience, this is a great change that we made, and I've been saying this every month, but we shifted the superintendent's report prior to the recognition of our guests. And then I get to have a captured audience to talk about the district a little bit. So, that's pretty cool. First off, what a busy week for our school board members, and I want to thank each of you for the time you've put in Monday through tonight, with three graduations Monday through Wednesday. We're, of course, in board session tonight, and tomorrow we get to go to our fourth graduation of the week. So, your time and dedication is super, super important to the kids of our district. For the benefit of our audience, we've graduated 1,376 seniors. And that is very, very exciting as we look at the class of 2018. There's nothing more exciting than graduation time. Last day of school. I know...when is the last day of school? Yes. Next Friday is the last day of school. I knew that would just roll off of his tongue, man, the audience. Next Friday, last day of school. So, that is very, very exciting. We also had our staff retirement on May 8th. Many of you were there. What an exciting time to honor our retirees. I tell you, I got a chance to engage with teachers, and I came away saying, "I wish I knew more of them." So, I guess the longer I'm here, the more I'll know. But just to see the folks celebrate that retirement was very, very exciting. Eighty-five district employees who've announced their retirement, and they represented 1,621 years of service. I think the highest I heard that evening was about 38 years. So, that was very, very exciting. Emily Miller, I think Dr. Miller is there in the audience. We're excited to note that she was recognized as the Missouri After-School Network's outstanding administrator. Outstanding administrator. Give it up for Emily Miller. As we get into the summer season, of course, we have after-school programming that we've set up for many of our students, but we also have summer reading. And as you all know, even our brightest students benefit from some form of summer learning lest they experience what the researchers like to call "summer slide." And put another way, that's losing some of the things that you gained over the course of the school year. So, one way to combat that, young people, if you don't decide to attend summer school, is just participating in some type of an academic program, one of which is summer reading at our farmer's market. And the Lee Summit Library Services will be offering this reading program, and it'll begin at 7:00 a.m., and it'll go until noon on Wednesdays, June 6th through July 25th. So, all students are invited to grab a book, check in with a librarian, and be a part of that program there at the farmer's market. We have a few other items in our report, board members. I thought it appropriate to share these and draw some attention. I'll conclude with one. Is Andy Campbell here? I haven't seen Andy tonight, but Andy Campbell's probably gearing up for tomorrow night's graduation at Summit Ridge Academy. And what I'll say is, our Citizens Advisory Council had the opportunity to hold our meeting a week or so ago in Andy's building at Summit Ridge Academy. If you have not experienced that building as a member of our board or even as a member of our greater community, you really should do so. Some exciting things going on in the name of alternative education. We'll have several of those students to graduate tomorrow night. But he also gave us lots of information about what's called "trauma-informed care," and how they are really analyzing the trauma that kids experience and utilizing that to create better educational experiences. Put another way, there's a score you can receive related to trauma. It's called an ACE score. And the beauty of it is, an ACE score doesn't have to define you for the rest of your life. There are things we can do systemically for students to remove the implications of a negative ACE score or an experience that he or she might have growing up. So, Mr. Campbell, he's our resident expert. If you missed that presentation, you missed one heck of a presentation. That concludes my report. Thank you all for the work you've done this week.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Carpenter. We are going to move into our portion of the agenda this evening that deals with our recognitions and our presentations. And one of my goals when I was elected the board president was to be a little bit more inclusive of our fellow board members so that everyone in the community, now that our meetings are being taped, have an opportunity to take part in these presentations. So, the first one that we're going to do is the National Merit Scholarship Cooperation Finalists, and Ms. Jackie Clark, Vice President, is going to read that recognition.
Thank you, President Bologna. The first recognition this evening, Lee Summit R-7 School District students named National Merit Scholarship Corporation finalists. Those folks are Joshua Foster...and you can come forward when I call your name, please. Alex Gohegan, and Molly O'Connor. All three of these students are from the Lee Summit West High School. The students were named National Merit Scholarship Corporation semifinalists last fall. I think we need to get everybody together. To tell you a little bit about each of the individuals, Joshua Foster is the son of Susan Foster and Kevin Foster. At Lee Summit West, Joshua participates in symphony orchestra, chess club, robotics, scholar bowl, science bowl, Spanish Honor Society, muy bueno, and is an international baccalaureate diploma candidate. Congratulations, Joshua. Alex Gohegan is the son of Laura Gohegan and Sean Gohegan. At Lee Summit West, Alex participates in cross-country track, una voce choir, concert choir, Missouri Scholars Academy, and is an IB diploma candidate. He also scored a perfect 36 on the ACT college admissions exam.
Wow.
Alex, none of us scored 36. Maggie O'Connor, our third honoree, is the daughter of Katie Prevost O'Connor and Brian O'Connor. At Lee Summit West, Maggie serves as debate co-president and was elected Youth in Government Clark State Convention Governor, Spanish Honor Society President, again, muy bueno, and National Honor Society Officer. She is a member of Kindness Council, Titan Ambassadors, and Student Senate. She is also an IB diploma candidate and was selected for the Missouri Scholars Academy. These recognized students have the opportunity to continue in the competition for approximately 8,200 National Merit Scholarship awards worth close to $33 million to be offered this spring. There are approximately 15,000 finalists throughout the United States. Founded in 1955 to conduct the annual national...the annual merit scholarship competition, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is a privately financed, not-for-profit corporation that operates without government assistance. Scholarships awarded through the program are underwritten by nearly 500 independent sponsor organizations and institutions, as well as with the corporation's own funds. Nearly 1.5 million students throughout the United States entered the 2018 merit program as juniors by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, which serves as an initial screen of program entrance. We congratulate all three of you. We've seen you all graduate this week, and we wish you the very best, and we hope to have you back here in the community after you've completed your educations. Congratulations.
Very nicely, Jackie. Well read. Thank you. Congratulations to families and students. And now, we are going to have the Lee Summit High School Missouri Scholars Academy recognition, and that is going to be read by Kim Fritchie.
Several Lee Summit R-7 School District sophomores were selected to attend the Missouri Scholars Academy, a three-week summer academic program for approximately 330 of Missouri's gifted students. The board was able to recognize the Lee Summit North High School and Lee Summit West High School students at the April board meeting, but due to the Lee Summit High School's academic awards program scheduling, Lee Summit High School recipients were unable to attend. So, we have asked them to join us at the meeting tonight. Lee Summit High School Academy attendees are Grace Garrett, Alyssa Harmon, Anigosa Close to 330 sophomores statewide are selected from among approximately 65,000 students. Acceptance is based on student essay, teacher recommendations, PSAT scores, and IQ tests. The academy is a residential program held on the University of Missouri Columbia campus and funded by the state of Missouri. The academy features carefully selected faculty and staff, and a specially-designed curriculum that focuses on the liberal arts and a variety of stimulating extracurricular activities. Academy students are able to become part of a unique learning community. Congratulations to our Lee Summit High School Missouri Scholars Academy students.
Very nice, Kim. Thank you so much. Congratulations, parents and students. Moving right on to item 3.03, we're going to recognize Summit Lakes Middle School students, and to do that is Ms. Julie Don.
All right. In the spring, 7th grade health classes at Summit Lakes Middle School learned about emergency response and first aid. Tate Stevens and Quincy Lewis, are they here tonight? Sorry. Tate Sterling, sorry. Didn't think they would ever need to put into action what they learned in class. However, during lunch in the school cafeteria, their friend began choking on a piece of food. The student, in distress, turned to Tate for help. Tate, the first responder, stood to his feet and tried grasping his friend around the waist, administering the Heimlich he'd learned about in health class. When Quincy saw them struggling, he also stepped in to help and provide additional maneuvers, successfully dislodging the food. Tate and Quincy both kept their composure and were able to quickly, in a stressful situation. We are proud of their bravery, compassion, and their heroic response. Joining Tate and Quincy this evening are their parents and Mrs. Crane, Summit Lakes Middle School health teacher. Miss Crane. So, Tate and Quincy, I felt like these were in order. Highsavers. Good job.
Very nice. Thank you so much, Julie, and congratulations, students. The next recognition is the National Nurses Day. The R-7 Board of Education is grateful to our valuable R-7 Health Services Department staff, members, and appreciate their commitment to supporting the health and well-being of each student. National School Nurses Day was celebrated on May 6th this year. Tyler Fullas, are you here, Tyler? Come on up. Did I say that right? Tyler Fullas? Okay. He is our district...he's at Greenwood and Longview Farms Elementary. He is representing the employees at our Board of Education meeting this evening. Congratulations to Tyler, representing our National Nurses Day. Let's give him a big round of applause. Moving right on in our presentations, Mr. Ryan Murdock has the next one. I felt it was appropriate for him to do this. National Physical Education and Sports Week. Take it away, Ryan.
I don't know if that means that I'm supposed to get in shape, but...so, the R-7 Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our physical education teachers and coaches and is grateful for the important work that they do to ensure that our students are healthy and active today and throughout their entire lives. Jamar Mozy, head football coach at Lee Summit North, and Susan Humphries, physical education teacher at Lee Summit West, will be representing the employees at tonight's board meeting if you would come forward and be recognized as a part of physical education appreciation. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much for everything that you do. Congratulations. All right. Next up is Mr. Bob White. He's going to talk about the recognition for National Teacher Appreciation Week.
The R-7 Board of Education expresses its appreciation to our outstanding teachers with sincere thanks for their positive impact on our students. During National Teacher Appreciation Week, celebrated May 7th through the 11th, we joined our entire community in celebrating our educators' valuable impact on our district's children and our future. We will briefly recognize this special week at this meeting with Ann Braun, R-7 Teacher of the Year, representing all teachers.
This next recognition is to recognize Ms. Janice Phelan. She is the Executive Director of Communications for the Lee Summit, R-7 School District. She was recently named the Missouri School Public Relations Association's 2018 Professionals of the Year. I'm just so proud of her, have had the privilege of watching her work in this community for so long. She was recognized at the annual spring conference. I want Janice to know that Dr. Luther was going to present this...oh. Janice, I wanted you to know that Dr. Luther was going to be here to present this, but he came ill. But he does send the following that he would like for me to share tonight. Janice is one of the go-to communications professionals in the western region and throughout the state. There are some PR pros who are very visible, and there are others who take care of business at a very high level without seeking any personal notoriety. Janice does exceptional work. She's thoughtful, strategic, and a great team player. He is pleased that you received this recognition as the Professional of the Year. And finally, last, in our presentations and recognitions, Mr. Dennis Smith, he's going to read the Meritorious Budget Award for Ms. Judy Hedrick.
The Lee Summit R-7 School District was selected to receive the Meritus Budget Award for Excellence in Budget Presentation by the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO International. The award recognizes the district's budget for the 2017-18 school year. We'd like to recognize Dr. Judy Hedrick for this accomplishment, three years in a row. According to the national organization, the Meritus Budget Award promotes and recognizes excellent in school budget presentation while acknowledging school business official skills in developing, analyzing, and presenting a school system budget. After rigorous review by professional auditors, the award is conferred only on school districts that have met or exceeded their program's stringent criteria. The award is sponsored by Boya Financial. School business officials are responsible for ensuring taxpayer dollars are spent wisely, and the district budget reflects student priorities and needs, said John Musso, Executive Director for ASBO International. The Meritus Budget Award program helps applicants create an accessible, accurate budget that builds trust with the community. Little side note, if you don't have anything else to do on a rainy day, the Lee Summit R-7 budget is available on the school district website. Congratulations, Judy.
Very nice job, board members, fellow board members. Thank you so much. And again, congratulations to everyone on your recognitions and the work that you do in our district. Every meeting, we do take comments from the public, and I always defer over to Ms. Linda Ismer. Do we have any comments from the public this evening?
We do not.
We do not? All righty. We will move right on into our next section, which is for everyone in our audience and watching this. As board members, we are assigned various tasks, committees work to support and collaborate with our district leaders and to show support for their efforts. This year, we have reorganized that, and in a minute, we're going to vote on that. But we're going to listen again to the outstanding work that my fellow board members are doing. I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to start with Bob White over here. Bob, I want to find out, what have you been doing lately?
Well, aside from going to three graduations, as we all have, we had finance committee meeting yesterday morning, and I'm thrilled to be back on finance committee, and that will be a report out later.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bob. Now, I'm going to go over to my right over here to Ms. Jackie Clark. Jackie, what have you been doing lately?
Thank you, Phyllis. I have been active again in the Lee Summit Chamber Government Relations Committee, and I want to take this opportunity to wish well the chamber president, Tim Arbiter, as he makes his transition from the Lee Summit Chamber to his next step in his career. And also, I've had the opportunity to meet briefly with one of our newest city council members, Mr. Lopez, and we'll be engaging in additional conversations in the near future. And finally, in the area of government relations, we are engaged in...let's see, it's 7:30. So, there are about 22 hours 35 minutes left in the Missouri 2018 legislative session. And the good news to report is that the school foundation formula has been fully funded for the second year in a row, and an additional $10 million was added to the state transportation funds. So, again, this is all tentative. It has to be put before the governor, and we'll see how that all works out. Sometimes, if revenues fall short, there are budget concerns, there are withholdings later on down the road. We don't have a clear picture of what may occur at this particular juncture this evening. There are other bills pending before the General Assembly that would affect education, but as of this hour, some of the ones that have been brought to the attention of the board and other education advocates, they have not come up as of this hour.
Very good. Thank you. And I'd also love for the audience to know that Jackie just completed her advanced-level board certification, so she'll be recognized at a leadership summit Saturday, June 2nd in Tanter. So, very good. All right. Going over here now, Ms. Kim Fritchie, tell us about what's happening.
All right. I represent...I'm the representative on Lee Summit Educational Foundation. To date for this year, Lee Summit Educational Foundation has paid $395,139.02 to provide support to a variety of programs throughout our district. And that's before we pay the committed $120,000 for Chromebooks, yeah, that we give each year. In addition, Lee Summit Educational Foundation recently awarded more than $65,000 in PEEK grants for the 2018-2019 school year. I went on the PEEK patrol for that one, and it was a lot of fun seeing the teachers get excited about those PEEK grants. We'd like to give a special thanks to our ambassador and superintendent circle friends of the foundation for helping to fund some of those classroom grants across the district. Lee Summit Educational Foundation has also recently awarded $71,000 in continuing education scholarships for our graduating seniors. Lee Summit High School students earned $40,500 in scholarships. Lee Summit North, $16,500. Lee Summit West, $14,000. Lee Summit Educational Foundation is preparing for the 2018-19 campaign year and is also determining new officers, directors, advisory members, and committee members for 2018-2019. In addition to that, I also represented the board at one of our DARE graduations in the last few weeks at Longview Elementary School. As evidenced by the student essays that were read, our students are internalizing information presented by our terrific DARE officers. So, many thanks to each of our DARE officers and our school resource officers who help educate our students and form positive relationships with them and help keep our schools safe. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kim. All right. I'm going to move right down here to Mr. Dennis Smith. Let's hear from him.
Thank you, Madam President. As Dr. Carpenter mentioned in his report, the Citizens Advisory Committee met on May 7th, and Julie and I were there. It was really exciting. We've tried with the CAC this year to move to different locales. In January, we were at great beginnings, and many of the CAC had never been there. Then, we, in this past, like I say, in May, we met at Summit Ridge, again, many. And we're talking, when everybody's there, 50, 60 members of the CAC. Now, not all were present, but we're in the number...pretty close to that. So, many had not been there. Outstanding presentation by Andy Campbell. In fact, I would submit that we, as a board, need to hear that presentation. I would submit that the R-7 School District staff needs to hear that presentation because there are kids from kindergarten to seniors that would benefit from that program, or from not in that program, but be able to hear what goes on there. As Mr. White indicated, we had our finance meeting in the morning, and we'll be giving a report on that here soon. And to my knowledge, I've not been notified, but there has been no TIF requests from the City Council of Lee Summit, Greenwood, Potawana, and all the other entities in which our school district is represented. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. Very well stated. Okay. I'm going to turn down here to our newest board member. Ryan, welcome, and tell us what you've been doing.
Well, seeing that I'm getting appointed to committees tonight, I have not attended any committee meetings, but I did want to say real quickly, I did meet this past month, obviously, with most of the central office administrators, so Dr. Miller, Dr. Collier, Dr. Hedrick, Dr. Carpenter, Linda, and I believe Dr. Gates is out there somewhere. I met with her as well. Thank you guys so much for working with my schedule, meeting very early in the morning, some of you, or in some cases, us never hooking up and meeting until yesterday because I messed up. So, and that's totally on me. So, but I look forward to serving on all the committees. Thanks.
You bring a great energy to this board. We're really excited to have you. Thank you, Ryan. Okay? And last, but certainly not least, down there is Ms. Julie Don. Talk to us about what you've been doing.
All right. I think it's funny, after being re-elected and starting my fourth year, I'm closer to the attorney and like our mainstay, tell me what to do. I think this is funny. Been on their that side for three years, but I'm going to get over it. Actually, I wanted to tell you about Got Talent Lee Summit Carers puts on. It's June 9th. Get your pen out, right? And it's at 7 o'clock at Lee Summit High School, and we have some great family entertainment. So, mark your calendars. And then, Bob, Kim, and I went to the white coat ceremony for STA over at St. Luke's a couple of weeks ago, and that was always very exciting. And I guess that's all I've done, graduations, and that's it. Phyllis?
Very nice, my dear. Very nice. All righty. Alrighty, as you can see, we have a very active Board, hardworking. They each bring so many incredible talents to this Board, and it's a pleasure working with all of them. The next thing that we're going to get into is what we call our Items for Decision. The first item of decision that we're going to be discussing and hearing about is Finance. Which one of these fantastic gentlemen have that this evening?
It's my pleasure to read the Finance Report.
All right, Bob.
Our investments through April totaled approximately $131.9 million. Variances in revenues and expenses by fund were reviewed and are within expected budget parameters. Our construction and maintenance update, the projects planned for the summer 2018 were reviewed. Finance Committee discussed the process for determining which projects can be completed utilizing existing cooperative purchasing contracts and projects that need to be bid. When cooperative purchasing contracts are used, staff complete a competitive pricing comparison process and secure the work through the issuance of district purchase orders. Separate contracts are not required when cooperative purchasing contracts are used. And I would point out that when we use cooperative purchasing for projects, we do have a spreadsheet that we use that determines whether the prices that they are bidding are competitive and are appropriate within the standards of what the district has for the work that needs to be done. An RFP process was completed for Sore Design Services. One bidder, HDR, responded to the request and is being recommended for contract award as pricing is within the estimate. HDR prepared the various feasibility study for this project, is knowledgeable and familiar with the infrastructure of the impacted area. Completion is difficult to determine at this time due to the complexity of this project. Our 2009 health insurance renewal. Dr. Jeff Miller, with the support from CBIZ and Sarah McMillan, Benefits Coordinator, reviewed the RFP evaluation and team process used to develop the recommendation to continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City for health insurance for the 2019 plan year. Premiums will increase an average of 5.26% with minimal plan design changes. The ancillary plans for dental, vision, life, AD&amp;D, disability, and long-term care are under a rate guarantee for 2019. Dr. Miller emphasized the importance of R7's benefits to attract and retain high-quality staff. Staff through the Team Lee Summit Survey also recognize the importance of these benefits. Other Finance Items, through routine payment processing, it was determined that the 2015 lease agreement providing for mobile classrooms at Mason Elementary was not approved by the Board of Education. The agreement requires ratification at this time. A separate lease renewal for the next two years is also included for Board action. An additional .17 strings teacher, FTE, and I know you're thinking, how do you have a .7 teacher, that refers to sections, is being requested for coverage of all sections required for the 2018-19 school year schedule. The Purchasing Department, through continued efforts aimed at efficient and effective service contracts, has identified the need for district-level photography services. Due to the number of varied photography needs, three photography vendors are being recommended for contract award. Purchasing will work with school sites to coordinate existing contracts into the district's contracts following Board action. I do have two items, two motions for this evening. 6.02, to approve, I move to approve the transfer of $2,838,624.83 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Thank you for that report. Is there any discussion among our Board members? Alrighty, though, so we shall take a vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. That motion carried, and we'll go on with the second one.
6.03, to approve the Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, and I will ask you again, is there any discussion on this? All right, excellent, outstanding. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you so much, Bob. That was wonderful. Good job. He's giggling at me. It is always the high point of the evening, hearing that, yes. All right, so we shall move on. Okay, so we're going to go into Section Number 7, and for everyone's information, what we do is we take items and we group them together, and we vote on them at one time. It saves us from going through each line item. I want you to know that all of my fellow Board members up here, we have our computers, we receive our Board updates on Friday, we get all of our information, we have time to read through this and to formulate decisions if we have any questions. Then, at that point, we do send our questions to Linda Ismer, who passes those questions on to the appropriate people. So, at this time, without explaining that, I would entertain a motion for Item Number 7 here. Anybody open to do that tonight? Yes, Ms. Kim?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.07 as presented.
Excellent. So, Kim has made a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion among fellow Board members here? Ms. Jackie, I see you're reaching for yours. Yes?
It's hard to not see me reaching across the dais.
I know, you make such a big, like, effort there.
I think I'm going to have to figure out how to pull it closer. Thank you for being recognized. I just want to note, because, you know, we work through these things so efficiently on the Consent Agenda Item, I asked a question in reviewing the packet, the Item 7.07, the Declaration of Surplus Property, I'd just like our audience to be aware that, year to date, those particular items, the surplus items, and that's, again, we're not complete with our school year calendar, it's already netted us over $104,000 for the district. So, you know, while that may seem like an insignificant line item, or something that people really don't know, what do we do with surplus property, and is it, you know, what is it sold for? I just kind of want to mention that that amount is $104,000. Now, I realize that's not net of original cost.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment on the Committee Assignment 7.04, and I would just like to say thank you to our new President, Phyllis Bollanya, for meeting with each of us and talking through our new Committee Assignments with us. General public, when I was sitting out there before I got elected to the Board, I had no idea there were so many committees and extra duties that the Board members take care of on sometimes a monthly basis, and it's quite a full sheet of committees and quite a lot of assignments for the folks who are sitting up here. So, I just didn't, I just wanted to make you all aware of that, and I just wanted to say thank you for letting us meet with you and those assignments.
You know, I want to comment on that, when I got to meet with everybody but Dennis, and I felt really bad about that. We kind of chatted briefly, but I had something come up, and I wasn't able to get over here in time. But Dennis and I have chatted before, so. But I will tell you, thank you for mentioning that, because it was important for me, moving into a new role, I wanted to hear from all of my fellow Board members, so. With that said, I believe we can now vote. So, Board members, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent, very good, though, that carried through. We are now going to go into Item Number 8, I believe, am I right here? Yeah, mhm. Item Number 8, this is an Item for Decision. It's also a consent. This is, we're going to ratify contracts over $5,000. We do have one item in this Item for Consent. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Administration recommends that the Board of Education ratify the lease for William Scottman at great detail from the attachment.
Second.
Very good. So, we have a motion and a second on this, ratifying this contract. Do we have any discussion, Board members, that we would like to bring to our attention? Anybody? All right. Very good. With that said, we shall take a vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. And we are now moving into Item 9. You can see that up on your screen there. These are also Items for Decision, and then we've put them under what we call a Consent Agenda. We're going to approve, these are new contracts to our district that are over $5,000. And again, we see quite a few items there. We would be here all night if we took every single line item, so we bring them together and trust that everybody's read their, done their homework, which I'm seeing, I know everybody up here has. So, I'm now going to entertain a motion on Item 8 here.
Madam President, I move that the Board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in Consent Agenda Items 9.02 through 9.32.
Second.
Very good. There's quite a few there. Do we have any discussion this evening on any of those? All right, I do have discussion. Julie?
All right. So, every year, we approve the programs for the math. There's one here. Let's see, what was I looking at? But anyway, so, we do these math programs for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. This is just an example. And I was just wondering if we ever looked at what other, if we have documentation of what other districts do, just to compare. I'm not really wanting anything right now, but I, but you already have something, so I'm going to let Jennifer take it away. I don't know, I just, I like to, you know, I'm competitive, so I kind of like to be better than the other ones, so go for it.
I would certainly say we do both. We look and see what other school districts are utilizing. We also look and see what aligns with the resources that we currently have. So, example, tonight's example would be Zern, and in looking with Zern, it fully aligns with Eureka Math, which is what we are working on in our classrooms right now, and it's actually for K through 6. So, as we have that discussion, we look and see, not just in the metro area, but throughout the state and throughout the nation, who is using that and what their growth is that they see from students. So, prior to us even bringing forth a program, we want to see, is it making an impact on our students, and does it align with the goals that we have, and does it align with the curriculum work that our specialists have done, and what do teachers think? So, it absolutely is a team decision, not ever a sole decision in that work, but also aligned with what others are doing and seeing success from.
Awesome. I knew that was happening, but I just had to ask. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, thank you for that explanation. Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion by any of our Board members here tonight? All right, yes, Ms. Jackie?
Well, I also think it's important, I mean, you've mentioned that we review the contracts and we, in our Board Packet, that's delivered on Friday before this particular meeting. And in reviewing those contracts, I want our taxpayers particularly to understand that there is a large group of these contracts tonight as part of this Consent Agenda, but we do look at things like whether these matters are sole source vendors, and we ask questions about performance and results relating to the contracts. I'm only really just over a year into my Board service, but you can guarantee that I will continue to ask about tangible results as opposed to qualitative results. And so, you know, that's what I'm starting to develop a line of questioning for our leadership as well as pricing, because if you might look at any of these items in the public information that's available, we don't always pick the lowest bid. You have to factor in previous performance from vendors and whether or not they are providing the quality of service or item that we need for our district. So, I just, just because I think that this is a, and I don't mean it in a negative way, but in a normally large group of contracts here in this Agenda Item, that those are the kinds of factors that we are charged with in analyzing as we look at the bids and the proposed contracts.
Yes, very nice. Thank you, Ms. Clark. And I believe Bob White would like to speak.
Yes, I just wanted the public to know that as members of the Finance Committee, Dennis and I sit on, all of these contracts are brought to us first before they come to the Board, so we review each one of those in detail, and many of the questions that you might have about contracts and about expenditures and about bidding and about purchasing are also asked in Finance Committee Meeting. That's one of the reasons why we have Board members that sit on that committee. So, we are looking out for the interests of the school district. We just want you all to know that we're doing those things. Thank you.
Yes, and I want to comment on that. I think you two, Dennis and Bob, are just two of the best finance people, and you make a great team, and I'm just so excited you two are working together on this. Thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we want to take a motion. We're going, we've got the motion, thank you. We are now going to vote on these items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say nay. Did not hear a nay? Very good. Exciting. All right, we are going to move on to now Number 10. This will appear on your screen. Number 10 is Items for Decision, and for everyone to know that we will be taking a motion and discussing each and every one of these items as they relate to our Board Agenda tonight. So, Item 10.01, we're going to approve the, excuse me, the insurance plans for the calendar year of 2019. I'm looking for a Board member to make a motion on that one. That's a big motion.
I move that the Board approve coverage and the related contract for the 2019 plan year with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City for health insurance with the district funding at $696 per employee per month, and to approve the contract with Cigna for dental with the district funding at $18.82 per employee, VSP for vision, the standard for life, AD &amp; D coverage, long-term disability, and short-term medical leave claim administrative services, and UNOM for long-term care.
Second.
Very good. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir. We've done some extent, yes, ma'am. I'm out of the chair.
It's okay. It's been a surfer two years.
We've done some extensive work in this area. And I'll call on Dr. Miller to give a little bit of background in terms of the recommendation that's on the table today.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Appreciate that. Would like to highlight to the Board, because I know in your packet, you received a lot of detailed information on this. The first thing is, we need to recognize some key team members. Sarah McMillan, who is our coordinates, Benefits Coordinator. Dave Kroll is here from CBIZ, who's been a vital team member, collaborative team member, and then Dr. Judy Hedrick. And I think those are three very key people in our district when we talk about our benefits and looking out for what's best, not only for the district, but also for employees. So, I will highlight a little bit of the work that's taken place this year. First and foremost, we were not actually up to go out to bid this year. We're in a three-year rotation, and we were not up. But I think we opted to solicit proposals this year to ensure that our plan and pricing were competitive, and it was a good process. It really was. We sent an RFP out, we received four proposals back. Those four proposals were received back from Aetna, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, the Self Insurance Pool, and I'll call that SIP from this point forward, of Greater Kansas City, and United Healthcare. It might also be worth noting, we included an RFP, sent an RFP to several other carriers who refused to basically submit a proposal, including Cigna, Humana, Missouri Consolidated Healthcare Plan, Missouri Educators Trust, Missouri Educators United Health Plan, and Midwest Public Trust, all declined to quote. And I think that's important, because that shows just how wide the scope was of the work that we did, and also to look how competitive the market is. I can tell you that we selected two vendors to take in front of a small team, which had representatives on it that included MSNA, excuse me, MST, MNEA, which are two teacher organizations, plus a classified staff member, plus a Board member who also represents retirees as well as administrative team. Those two that we moved forward to that small team for review, we based that upon competitive pricing and a benefit package that would meet the expectation of R7. And the two that we moved forward to that small team was Blue Cross Blue Shield of KC and the SIP, which, as I said before, is a self-insurance pool of Greater Kansas City. That small team vetted for half a day, then at the end of that, I can tell you, there's a lot of great questions that were asked. CBIZ was a great resource and partner, as always, and the small team recommended that we move Blue Cross and Blue Shield forward to our at-large insurance team. And I think it's important to note our collaborative process here in Lee Summit when it comes to decision-making. The collaborative process includes The collaborative process includes going in front of a large insurance team, which is made up of representation from every building or department. It's approximately a 50-member team. That 50-member team vetted over two meetings, uh, the recommendations that you have in front of you. At the first meeting, we vetted in detail whether they would come to consensus on Blue Cross Blue Shield. It was a unanimous recommendation. At the second meeting, we vetted in detail, I could tell you, the basic plan change, if any, that we would recommend. And you can see based upon the recommendation that we are replacing a, uh, that we are recommending a small plan change. We will be replacing the buy-up HMO with an equivalent exclusive provider organization or EPO plan, with all the other plans staying the same. I think Jackie did a great job of uh, you know, uh, reading the recommendations, so I'm not gonna go back through the funding aspect of it uh, in detail. I will tell you that one of the things that is very important to me, which is not on the recommendation, is the fact that we have a total aggregate liability of 105%, and I think that's very important when we look at protecting the lib, uh, protecting the financial uh, aspect of the district. Uh, it's my pleasure to, once again, answer any questions that the, the board might have related to this. You can see that it's about a 5.2 percent, a 5.26% increase. Uh, and I think that's very competitive when you look across the board and the book of business here in this region and Greater Kansas City. Uh, I will also make one final note. Uh, our ancillary plans, which would include dental, vision, life, AD and D, and disability, we are not up for bid on this. Uh, those are locked into a three-year rate guarantee, but we wanted to make sure that the board voted on that too. Uh, at this time, I would answer any questions that you might have. Um, there was also a small recommendation that is not part of this, that I think I do want to get on record, and that is that for next fall, we have a small team that looks at self-insurance, uh, and that that small team will look at self-insurance from Lee's Summit standpoint, not necessarily ju, uh, joining a consortium or another group. And so you will see that come to fruition next fall as we continue to uh, be financially savvy and responsible, yet try to provide uh, the benefit package that we think our employees deserve. At this time, I'll answer any questions.
Very good, Jeff, I do have a question, several. Um, I'm gonna start with Bob over here.
Uh, not a question as much as a comment. Uh, Jackie and I, and also Kim, served on this committee. Uh, it's um, our insurance benefit is an extraordinarily important piece of the package that we offer to our employees. And the longer that you are an employee of the district, the more important this benefit becomes. And uh, at, for some of us, and for many of you, it's almost as important as your salary. Uh, so uh, this is uh, tough work that, that gets done on this, and I wanna commend the team uh, for the level of expertise that they brought to this. The uh, insurance team when it met had wonderful questions that weren't easy. Uh, we looked at all the pieces of this to try to do the best thing that we could for the, the members of our school district. Uh, and we want to try to encourage folks to use our plans to the best, that, the best way that they can. Being a, a informed consumer of health services is the best thing that you can do to help lower costs of insurance. And we have a great opportunity here in our district to do that with our clinic, uh, that we offer for our district employees and retirees, and also with the use of some of our plans, uh, that provide a, a really great opportunity for folks to reduce or minimize their health expenditures. So uh, congratulations to the team.
Very good. I believe Julie has a question or comment.
I have to ditto that on Bob. My husband and I are both self-employed, so I get that um, some people just work for the insurance, but anyway. I also want to tell Jeff Miller, you are like the guru of collaboration.
Uh huh.
So I appreciate that. My one little question is, and you don't have to tell me now, but do we know the percentage of our um, employees that actually use our insurance? And that's, you guys can tell me that in.
I, I don't have a percentage, I have a number, I believe, that uh, actually Sarah McMillan and Dr. Judy Hedrick put together. I've learned a lo, long time ago, give credit where it's due.
Yeah.
Uh, and so um, would you like for me to share that number?
I would just like to know, just, this is just kinda personal.
So when I look at this, and, and uh, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, on the employee only, we have 1,753 that utilize ACT. We have um, on the employee only, we have 162 retirees. We have nine that uh, utilize Cobra. This is all based up on our April 2018 billing. Uh, when it comes to employee and children, we have 357 active employees that utilize a plan based up on that. With our retirees, we have 10 that utilize employee and children. And we have one that's on Cobra for employee and children. For employee and spouse, we have 86 that are active. And I'm breaking this down based upon who is included in the, in the insurance plan. Uh, the retirees, we have 45 that utilize an employee and spouse. And we have two that are on Cobra and utilizing employee and spouse. For employee and family, uh, this is the one that I utilize, uh, just uh, which is active. We have 130 that utilize that plan based upon our billing cycle here in April. For retirees, we have five that use employee and family, and for Cobra, for employee family, we have one. So if you look at our total numbers based up on our April 2018 billing, we had 2,326 active employees utilizing the benefit that you're voting on tonight, to some extent. We have 222 retirees utilizing the benefit that you're voting on tonight. And we have 13 that are utilizing a Cobra, which is in essence that bridge that gets in between plans or meets our needs. Uh, Dr. Hedrick, Sarah, anything that I missed on that?
Okay.
That was a much brief, more brief answer, thank you.
I was gonna guesstimate 80%, so that's good, but, that's good. Thank you so much.
Alrighty, I believe I have Board Member Fritchie who would like to ask a question or share, I could share something.
Yes, um, I just wanted to say um, Bob and Jackie were the two board members who were on that committee. I was the one representing the retirees, and so um, I had the privilege of being on the small committee that vetted the two companies. Um, we worked for over a half a day on that one, um, to get to that, to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Um, I just want to highly commend the, the three hardest-working folks that really, it's, it takes a, like, extreme amount of time to get this process completed, and I just want to thank Dr. Jeff Miller, Dr. Judy Hedrick, and especially Sarah McMillan sitting back there, 'cause she's the one that feels the insurance uh, questions day in and day out, and deals with all of the phone calls through the companies, et cetera, so thank you all very, very much for all of your work on it.
Alrighty, do I have any other comments from the board? All right, I believe we have them, oh, sorry, Jackie?
I just uh, think we ought to mention also the concept of self-insurance. I, I don't want anyone listening that would be part of that uh, 2,300 of our, our folks uh, that are participating now. In my career in the private sector here in Kansas City, the two major corporations are um, self-insured, and we have Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage. So a, as we begin the exploration of that potential option, in fact, my current employer has about the same employee base nationwide as the district does, just a little bit more, so I think that, uh, I just want to make sure that, you know, that sometimes the unknown can be a little disconcerting, particularly on the health insurance benefit, so I just want to make that point very clear.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you for sharing that. All right, we shall take a vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alrighty, I believe that carried, very nice. Uh, we'll go on to item 10.02, and again, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair, um, interesting number, 0.17 music FTEs for Westview. Dr. Sharp, explain that interesting number.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, madam president. Yes, a 0.17 does seem rather insi, insignificant as to what Dr. Miller was just talking about, but it is not given the scope of our music schedule that we have in R7, given the size and the scope. And what I mean by that is, is that the instrumental and band, the strings and the instrumental sections that we have throughout our master schedule, with the retirement of longtime um, chair there with Paul Morales, and Paul was a strings teacher, and then you onboard Amy Crinkie with vocal, it, there is a ton of internal shifting, and what I mean by that is, is I didn't include the matrix into our board packet, but I would gladly share it with you when you look at the schedule. Okay, you have lots of teachers that will teach either six sections in one building, six across two, five across three, or four across four. And so you're looking at a lot of music teachers in our school district that will have a lot of windshield time, and a lot of time in either a high school, middle, and an elementary all in the same day. When we shifted that and Amy took on, and she's a vocal, and Paul retired, we, we did some internal shifting for Dr. Miller at PL. Uh, Dr. Kephart and myself vetted through the schedule, it's a very complex matrix to try to really pinpoint where we can do the least amount of windshield time, the least amount of disruption, and the least amount of uh, principal um, dissatisfaction, if you will, and the most student service that we can do to try to take care of it. When we did that and we handled it out, uh, we ended up with a 0.17 at Westview. Uh, one of, one of our teachers, Mrs. Sulzberg, has been working with two sections that we had had. We had one that was hanging out there that we could not get filled, so we went ahead and tried to see if we could make a 0.17 there to turn it into basically a 0.5 to service Westview, Sunset Valley, and Mason, which makes it much easier to hire a staff member if you do that, because we had retired teachers doing that, that's another point to be, so that's kind of the, the short of it, if you will.
Goodness. Wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, I believe I need a motion.
I move that the board approve the 0.17 strings FTE at a cost of $14,040 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I, I would just like to uh, throw out congratulations or kudos to the two of you down there at that end, 'cause I know a little bit about that kinda scheduling, and it isn't fun. And uh, to, to make that work and to, and to really benefit, more than just a section, I mean, you're, it impacts a great number, so thank you, Dr. Kephart, and thank you, Dr. Sharp, for working through that situation.
You're most welcome, Dennis. And thank you, and yes, one small domino sways the entire schedule across the entire school district. Because they all have to be taught at the same time at the elementary, both strings and band at the same time. So it is, it is a challenge. We got through it.
Well, thank you again, and as a student of music in this district, and a person who's uh, watches it and is still involved, we have the finest music program in the state of Missouri, and a lot of that becomes, it starts here with the scheduling and the opportunity to move our teachers around in this district so smoothly. And it benefits our kids, keeps that program just building and building, so again, thank you so much. Um, so I would like to take a vote on this, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passed. All right, I'm gonna go down to 10.03, and again, I would love to turn this over to Dr. Carpenter again.
Yes, ma'am, we've done some extensive work with the Lee's Summit Symphony to make certain that we have a memorandum of understanding that reflects this partnership, and I'll ask Dr. Hedrick to give us some greater information.
This is one of those areas where, uh, as we've worked um, over the past several years to make sure we have agreements um, for um, in, in instances where we can, uh, where an organization can provide benefits to our employees and, and our students. And, and in exchange for that, we can um, allow them use of some space in our, our district. Uh, this, um, so this uh, was presented to a team um, of staff within the district. We had several meetings uh, to review, uh, what, some expectations. Uh, the, the symphony has come back with this um, proposal of this um, MOU. We have run that by uh, this gentleman sitting to my right, uh, for legal review. Um, we've made a, a couple of slight changes during that process, but really, I think we're at a point where we're um, would ask, be ready to ask you to approve that uh, agreement, so that we'll, we'll see some benefits, both for our students and, and for the uh, Lee's Summit Symphony, and we can pro, continue that partnership and support of that organization.
Very good, thank you. Uh, any other discussion?
I just want to note that we raised the question, these fees are all consistent with the previously approved district policy for rentals, so just want to get that on the record.
Very good, thank you. Alrighty, we have uh, I need to make a motion here. Yes, so would somebody please step forward and make a motion?
I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Lee's Summit R7 School District and the Lee's Summit Symphony.
Very nice, do I have a second?
Second.
Alrighty, any further discussion? Yes, uh, Ryan?
So I just have one quick question about this one, 'cause we got the quick change yesterday um, in the email regarding um, the free admission to concerts not applying anymore to families, just only to the actual students at the Lee's Summit Symphony. I'm just only curious, because if it's fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who are gonna have to go to the concerts, they're gonna need their parents and/or guardians to go. Is there, was there any stipulation that we could even get one parent and/or one guardian, or something like that, since they're gonna be with them?
No, not at this time, and that was something we added to that late in the process, and so uh, that was um, something that we tried to, tried to accomplish, but financially for the symphony, that's not a manageable um, alternative for them.
Okay, thanks.
I, I want to add to that. I, I read that as maybe that it was a change in the proposal. Uh, I just attended the symphony with the sixth grade honor choir, and, and I know we bought tickets for everybody, in, including said student's parents, so I didn't think that there was an exemption, so that's, that's the way I read it, Ryan. I don't know if that's the case.
Sure I understand what you mean by, by an exemption.
Uh, that, that the student's parents would attend for free. Uh, we did not, you know, we paid.
Right, that's not part of this agreement.
Yeah, and I've had dancers in the past perform, and their parents have not, their parents have paid. They pay the admission, admission.
Judy, I can probably answer that question effectively. Uh, the policy of the Lee's Summit Symphony Orchestra is that third, uh, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are admitted with a paid adult. So that's, that's been our policy for five or six years.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is there any further discussion? All right, at this time, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I respectfully abstain.
All right, motion carried. Thank you very much. And we will go on next, uh, finally to item 10.04, and again, right over here to you, Dr. Carpenter.
Absolutely. At item 10.04, we have our personnel report. Um, and it looks like we have some anxious people out here in the audience, and I'm probably as anxious as they are, because I want to meet all of them. So Dr. Miller, get us started.
Absolutely, uh, appreciate that, uh, Dr. Carpenter. I, I will uh, take a, a brief moment here to point out, there is a significant number of red on your personnel report, because we have been busy literally right up until uh, you know, about 4:30 this afternoon. So there's 14 new hires that are, uh, we worked through and processed, primarily thanks to Dr. Carlson uh, today in red. You might also note uh, that on the very last page, there's a strike through. Uh, I've had this happen three times uh, in my career here as HR, where we had a person who actually submitted their retirement, the board voted on it, and then they came back and had a conversation with me uh, several weeks later, and would like to have, uh, rescind their retirement. Uh, and in this case, uh, worked with Dr. Emily Miller, and I could tell you, we are thrilled to uh, maintain an interpreter uh, of that skill set, so you'll see a strike through, uh, and we would like to uh, reemploy that person uh, for the 18, 19 school year. Several anxious people, we got some great leadership coming into the district, pending Board of Action, and I'll answer any questions that you might have at this time.
I don't believe we have any questions or comments.
Need a motion now.
So that's, I'm asking, I'm going to be asking for a motion. Can one of my fellow board members make a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel transactions as listed.
Second.
And now, do we have any discussion? With no discussion pending, we will take a vote. All those in favor of aye, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Alrighty, very good, that personnel report passed, and now, Dr. Carpenter, I believe we'd like to have Dr. Miller here to make some introductions.
I'm going to actually turn this over to uh, Dr. Sharp and Dr. Kephart. I think that's appropriate, have them turn over to their building administrators to announce uh, their new right arms and left arms when it comes to uh, instruction in the building, so we'll start with uh, secondary.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate that. I'll go with uh, I've got Dr. Meisenheimer, Jeff- I'll go with, I've got Dr. Meisenheimer, Jessica Faro, and Dr. Bonnison out there. So Dr. Bonnison, let's start with you, sir.
My pleasure to introduce Mrs. Carrie Hardin, who comes with a myriad of experience and skills in the enterprise and education sectors. She is known as a very collaborative and innovative leader. And in talking with administrators and supervisors in the past, one said that a student said that she would be a brick for Mrs. Hardin. Another student coming in said that she's the hardest working person in the school. And so we're very happy to have Mrs. Hardin. Her husband works in Lee Summit as well. He works at Lee Summit West as a teacher and coach and they have three children, Connor, Grant, and Reese. So we're very happy to have Mrs. Hardin as part of our R7 SCM.
Thank you, Dr. Bonnison. Welcome, Carrie. Dr. Meisenheimer?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Barry Crowley as the next Assistant Principal at Lee Summit North. Barry is coming to us from Park Hill South, so one of our competitors, especially when we are comparing ourselves academically, where he's been an admin intern, he has been a special education teacher. And Coach Jamar Mosey actually brought him down two years ago to be a football coach for Lee Summit North. So he's been around our students for a couple of years now. Very excited to have him. He's actually come and spent two Mondays with us and I just got to tell a quick story because I was so impressed by this. The second Monday that he was with us, well, back in April 2017, we started greeting students at the doors. So we had an administrator and a counselor. He beat me to the north door out there holding the door for the kids and he hadn't even started working yet. So very impressed with his customer service and attention to kids. So Barry Crowley.
Thank you, Dr. Meisenheimer. Welcome, Barry. And not, last but not least, Mustang Nation with Mr. Scalfero.
I'm excited to introduce the next principal at Bernard Campbell Middle School and the newest proud member of Mustang Nation, Melanie Hutchinson. Melanie was a teacher in Independence, science teacher, and in Green Valley. Two years as an instructional coach in Green Valley and has spent the last three at Antioch Middle School in North Kansas City School District. So lives in Lee Summit, husband Dave, two kids, and we are, Brett and I are glad to have her on the team. She'll keep us straight and we're looking forward to synergizing with her and doing what's right for staff, students, and parents at Bernard Campbell.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Welcome, Melanie, welcome.
And I have several elementary leaders here today as well to announce three of our new assistant principals that we are happy to have. I will start with Ms. Kristen Merrill, who is here representing both Hazel Grove and Longview Farm for a split position.
So I'm excited to introduce Rachel Flood. She comes to us with 11 years' experience in the classroom as a teacher, started in Raytown and spent several years there and then is currently in Blue Springs. Her husband is a firefighter and they have three children, live in Blue Springs, correct? We just hired her, so this is a very new partnership. But Kim Massler at Longview Farms is enjoying her sixth grade recognition tonight, so she did not be here, so I'm here representing both of us. But we are excited because Rachel's a collaborator, she's got kids' hearts at her heart, and so we just know it's going to be a great partnership for all three of us.
Thank you. And up next, I will have Dr. Fellhauer, our newest leader at Underwood, introduce Ms. Mott.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm excited to announce Leslie Mott here. She will be the Assistant Principal at Underwood. She comes to us from Raytown where she has served as administrative intern slash assistant and prior to that, she was a teacher there in the district. Before that, Kansas City public schools. She's been taught down in Florida. She comes to us with lots of experience and we look forward to her influence. During this process, I was inspired by everything that she shared in terms of her passion with kids and wanting to support the teachers at a high level. So we're both going to be new, we're both going to learn, and I'm really excited for this opportunity. So welcome to Underwood and also she brought her family here that I believe she would like to come here.
Awesome. This is my entire family who resides at Lee Summit. My husband Ryan's in the back. My middle son, Justin, and then my youngest, Melissa Mott. She had a comment about the Black History Month. And then our oldest is finishing up his freshman year there in Wisconsin, so we're glad to be a part of this.
And Mr. Burnett, would you like to introduce Ms. Sutton?
First of all, through this process and elementary with three positions, Assistant Principals posted at the same time, I've had the opportunity to sit in and meet both Rachel and Leslie and as a team player, having them join our team as part of the administrative staff, I am super excited. Welcome aboard. The reason I'm here to introduce our newest member to our family pleasantly is our Assistant Principal, John Sutton. John comes to us well recently from University Academy Charter School, was an instructional coach before that, as an instructional coach at Excelsior Springs, as an instructional coach along with a curriculum instructor and classroom teacher in North Kansas City and started a career in Kansas City, Kansas School District. So I know my staff and I are very excited to have John join our team. I joke, I give a little joke here, I said, if you're going to work with me, you're going to have to be able to handle this sometimes. But one of our answers to their interview question, how should you be able to stress that she said she likes to cook? And I said, I want her. And I actually asked with her husband, Chad, and I saw how skinny he was and I wondered if that's going to be good. So welcome, John, John, Chad.
Well, we are thrilled to have Rachel, Leslie, and John join our elementary team. I'm going to throw it to Dr. Miller.
Absolutely. We also have some new members of our team at the Stansberry Leadership Center that we're exceptionally excited about and Dr. Collier, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Yes, good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our next Executive Director, Special Services. Dr. Stacy Mathis is with us this evening and she will be taking currently Dr. Emily Miller's position as she moves on to downstairs responsibilities, I tell her. So Dr. Mathis is actually a graduate of the Lee Summit School District. So it's kind of returning home for Dr. Mathis. She was a special education teacher here in the school district and began the social emotional behavior program at Underwood Elementary. She left R7 and went to a neighboring school district to be an instructional coach in special services and she there currently is Director of Student Services in that district. She is very familiar with implementing programs district wide. She has presented across our state relative to behavior supports for students. She comes to us with a wealth of experience and we're really very excited to have her and know that she really is going to work hard with staff. She's already begun transitioning with Dr. Miller and the rest of the special service team. So welcome, Dr. Mathis, and I know she has three children who also attend Lee Summit School, so welcome and we're glad you're here.
I just want to say you all have been very busy and I want to say thank you. I recently spoke with Phyllis Barks at MSBA. Dr. Carpenter and I are working on the retreat coming up and she's going to be coming up and doing a presentation and we're going to be working together to meet the needs of the board and the district. And one of the things she started off immediately was saying, what is going on in Lee Summit? It's the buzz all over the state, all these great people being hired, being brought in. And she just said, I want you to know, I'm hearing about you all over the state of Missouri. So thank you, Dr. Miller, Dr. Kephart, Dr. Sharp, Dr. Collier, and all of our administrators for working diligently and bringing the very best of the best to Lee Summit. And hi, Kristen Merritt, Kristen Merrill, sorry. Yes, speaking of a Lee Summit grad, right there. Anyway, thank you. Ms. Jackie wants to say something.
Speaking of buzz around the state, every time I'm in the state capital, someone is lobbying me for position in Lee Summit. So just be aware, the word is out about coming to work here.
It's a great, great day. Thank you so much again for all of your efforts. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 11 and that is items of information. It's a presentation by our Early Childhood Center. Let me get right here, let's just look here. Hi, you're exactly the person I was going to call up, thank you. Wow, that was just like magic, poof, she just showed up. I'm turning it over to Dr. Carpenter.
Let me go ahead.
Carrie Baim, how are you doing?
I'm great.
Good, we're super excited to have Carrie here to talk about our early learning program. We talk about Great Beginnings, but they're really multiple programs under one roof and she's going to take us through this program evaluation slash presentation of sorts and think it'll be very informative. Thank you, Carrie, get us started.
So we're just going to focus on your board priority one and so we thought we would share some things that we've been doing this year that are maybe a little bit new for us and what that means. So we use the DRDP, which is the desired results developmental profile, to really look at our students' data and figure out what are the areas we need to work on. Those helped to build our building improvement plans and we worked on self-regulations of feelings and behaviors, which if you could imagine a school full of three, four, and five-year-olds, that might be something you need to hit first. And then number sense and quantity, we saw great gains in there. We really did some good PD with our teachers in that and they took it the next day and we saw it in classrooms. It was awesome. Inquiry through observation investigation, we're going to talk about that in just a minute. We started a new program at early childhood that really worked on that piece. Project approach is the part that really worked on that piece. So we went to training this summer, a lot of us, or last summer, and really learned what it was like to let students lead the learning and to teach them to be investigators in topics that they are interested in. And so that really, that's what this slide is all about. We have had kiddos doing pre-project work, they're doing, they can't write everything that they need to write, they can't write all their questions, but they sure can do representational drawings. They can write, give questions to their teachers to ask. We have just seen, because it's student-driven and it's a topic that they're interested in, we've just seen amazing growth in our questions. And we have one classroom that has done three, she just finished, and some of these pictures are her class, she just finished a project and it's been pretty stunning to see what kids can do throughout that year. So we're really proud of that work. New interventions. So much like the K6 programs, we put in a part-time, title-funded, speech improvement services program. That means that a kiddo does not need to have an IP to receive some speech and language and so we've been able to do that. That has really been impactful. We also were able to offer five little week sessions of Friday schools. We were able to bring in families with their children. They didn't qualify to come to our preschool, but we knew they were a little bit at risk, so we brought them in with their families. The teachers worked in small groups, we had like 10 families. Teachers worked with them, they stayed for about an hour, they did it for five weeks in a row. We have had amazing, amazing feedback from families on what a difference that made from them and a lot of those families then had great interest in parents as teachers because they see that connect. So that's been really, really powerful. Conscious discipline is something we've been on the journey of for about seven years, but this year, because we're taking part in the district's RTI program, we were able to bring in the DEVERO, which it really lets our teachers rate how our students are socially, emotionally, and what we need to work on with them. So that's been a really new piece for us. Good information. We are really working on a lot of things in that area. So that RTI process, we've joined that district and that's been powerful. Another new thing for us this year has been our UCM partnership. So we have eight UCM students, they're juniors, and they are in early education and they come into our classrooms once a week and they do lessons with kids. Their supervisor is on-site at all times. It has been amazing and we are very glad that we are extending that to the Special Education Department of Early Learning. So we're going to really have benefit to future staff hopefully and benefit to our kiddos. So that's kind of what we've been doing and that is it. Do you have questions?
I believe that we do have a couple. I believe we do have some questions. Dennis?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I told you earlier in the program that we had met at, the Citizens Advisory Committee had met at the Great Beginnings because we need to get out and see where all these other schools are that are in our district and they were totally impressed. Some of you sitting out there in the audience know that, and I'm going to lose track of time, but in, I think it was 2005, somewhere in that neighborhood, that building was opened through an entirely different way of funding and building that program and with great partnership with our Parks and Rec Board. And if I remember the numbers and Cheryl's going to remember those numbers better and I will, but somewhere in a neighborhood of $300,000 in kind just for the property out there that costs us a dollar, I think, in 25 years or something like that to do that. Then I, as I made some school visits, I had the opportunity to, and I had met Carrie before, but I had the opportunity to go out and visit Great Beginnings and take a tour. And the UCM thing, I had no awareness of. We got students there practicing and teaching. In fact, I talked to a couple of them while I was there, working with it, you know, what a way to get kids involved, or future teachers involved in special education. And then when I went home, and then I went and visited with her for a few minutes and when I got home, as I tried to do, I sent a thank you note via email. Sorry, usually supposed to do that by paper or card, but emails. And I just told her, I really like a feisty principal. And
I was like, hmm.
And that's in a very complimentary way. She is so full of energy that it radiates through that building and I just wanted to go kudos to you and to your staff out there, what you're doing.
Thank you. Very nice, Dennis, thank you. All right, I believe, oh, we've got several here, Mr. Murdock.
Yeah, I had a quick question for you. Because Great Beginnings obviously uses satellite classrooms as well as the main building and stuff like that, I'm curious if there's been any parent reaction or anything to preferring being in a satellite classroom versus being at the main campus? And I only say that from personal experience of my son being at Great Beginnings and then in a satellite classroom. But I'm just curious if there's different results that we have with having the kids interacting with the older kids at the main elementary buildings versus being at Great Beginnings?
You know, we just see benefits to both. We really do. Our elementaries have worked beautifully and a couple of the principals are here tonight that have partnered with us through the years. We really, we, at the very beginning, I remember a few parents saying, but I want to be in the mothership. And they see the mothership and it's beautiful and we have this beautiful playground, but really, once they meet a teacher and kind of get pulled into that school family, they're good to stay there. So we've really not had that issue.
Ms. Kim Fritchie?
Yes, I just, I had the opportunity to visit the Childhood Center, oh, it's probably been about five weeks ago, I think now, but you all do our district and its students a fantastic service. I have three grandsons who have had parent educators and one who had speech services through your program. And I agree with all the great things that your parents said in the survey that you provided to us via our Friday board update or our board packet. I also attended what they called Steam Night a little while back and I was really amazed at the innovative activities and the excellent parent participation that happened that evening, how everyone was so collaborative in that process. So I just wanted to say thank you for, to all of your staff members in your programs. Thank you.
Ms. Julie Doan?
She wasn't on there? No. It was Dennis.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I would like for everybody to know, and especially those that might be watching our video, that there's an invitation. You love having people come out and see the facility and it's open anytime. You can, at your convenience, this is what your invitation says, when at your convenience, for the length of time you're available, schedule a time, kim.fisher@lsr7.net or 986-2464. I'm saying that because I know you like to have visitors out there and to show what great things are happening out there. So thank you so much, greatly appreciate your work.
Thank you all for your support of our learning.
Any other comments, Dr. Carpenter?
Madam President, the only thing that I Madam President, the only thing that I will add, prior to this year, the district had a Pratt, if you will, that started to really look at the work of early childhood in the district in terms of number of students being served, and I'm sure Carrie will tell us today, if she had more time, that we have significant numbers in terms of students who would benefit from said service. But we kind of shelved that for the benefit of Mr. Murdoch and some others, due to priority two, and working on this in a more systemic way around all of our facilities and locations. But I want to emphasize that early learning will be a key part of the district's work around priority two. Put another way, this is pre-K through 12, in terms of how we look at facilities and need going forward. You brought up the question about satellites, and I think you're right, we, we make good on that when kids get in front of a teacher, but another question is also, the kids who need to be in front of a teacher and who are not. And I think we have significant numbers in that area, and that's something that priority two will continue to work to address going into the new school year. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I got to ride a tricycle and be video.
You did, you did. Oh, I'd love to see that one. Did I see the video? Okay. Thank you again. This leads us into item 12, and each and every month, we receive, we receive written reports, and this month, fellow board members, we received three. Item 12.01 was Facilities and Maintenance Project Update, and then item 12.02 was our Student Handbooks from Early Childhood Center, Elementary, Secondary, and Athletic and Activities, and then the third written report that we received was 12.03, Federal Programs Report. While we do not have those presented to us this evening, we have read all those reports, and I'd like to ask fellow board members, do you have any questions, comments that you would like to make about those written reports? And I'm going to take it, send it down to Ms. Kim Fritchy.
Yes, I actually always enjoy reading the reports that we get, because I think they're very informational and insightful. 12.01, Facilities and Maintenance, Judy, thank you for keeping us all updated on all the projects that have been happening in the near future. Kyle Gurrell, many thanks for all of your Facilities and Maintenance employees who will be working very hard this summer, as they always do, to keep our facilities looking good and operating well, so, thanks for that. On 12.02, on Student Handbooks, this is always of great interest to me, because I have a lot of experience revising and editing and working with middle school handbooks. To each of the administrators who have submitted handbook changes in handbooks, thank you. I know from experience what a painstaking job that that can be, and we appreciate all your hard work on these important documents that help guide expectations for each school. Those are very important, because those turn into major publications, in case you all have not known that. That turns into our student planners and handbooks that every student gets from the preschool program up through the high school program, so that's a lot of man-hours from our administrators working on those. Thank you. 12.03, on the federal programs, while visiting almost every school in the district this year, I witnessed just how important the funding for federal sources is to our students. These funds are providing interventions and opportunities for our students designed to help each student succeed, and those schools that qualify have been greatly assisted by funds to provide classrooms, teachers, paraprofessionals, therapeutic counseling. We should all be very grateful for these federal resources, because they're available to us so we can help our students who need it the most, so, I'm just very, very thankful for all of those federal programs, thank you.
Kim, thank you very much for sharing that with us. Do we have any other comments from our fellow board members tonight? Those are great written reports, thank you for all the hard work that goes into them. Ms. Jackie?
The, I want to make note that, and congratulate our high school administrators for including some discussion about the sale and use of e-cigarettes. You know, it's hard to keep up with changes in our society, and I really appreciated noting that some of those issues were addressed in that, those high school handbooks, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments, fellow board members, anybody? Okay, so we get into the time, we've shared with you our board reports, we've made decisions, and now it's time just to hear from our board members in a roundtable situation, so, I think I'm going to start with Ryan down there, share with us, this is where we talk about some things maybe happening personally, let's, let's hear what you've got going on.
So basically, we just keep you here for as long as possible, that's what we're going to try to do, right? Just a couple of things from me, I just wanted to clarify, my son had a fantastic experience in the satellite classroom, just, just so you know, so, he was at Hawthorne Hill, and it was awesome because he ran over a couple of the sixth graders there, and so I was just like, well, you're big enough to knock them over, so that's good, so nicely done. Then we taught him how to actually slow down just a little bit, so. This past month has been kind of a whirlwind, obviously, for me getting started, so thank you to everybody who's helped me in this particular transition, from administrators and then people within buildings. I'm particularly fond, obviously, of all of my people at Longview Farm Elementary, where my boys go, who have been helping me out. So in the last month, they had Derby Day, which is an amazing time for Longview Farm, the Friday before the Kentucky Derby, all the kids go out, we run laps, adults then try to keep up with the kids, we fail miserably, and it was really hot that day, but we raised money for the school by running as many laps as we possibly can, and my second grader will tell you that he did run more than me. And then, as some of you probably know, a lot of the elementary kids went out to the Kansas City Zoo this past Monday, and I was blessed, I guess, to go on that particular field trip, and I only say that because that was a lot of elementary kids from a lot of different schools, running in a lot of different directions, doing a lot of different things, and so, but that was, that was a really good time, and so, but I do look forward to the upcoming activities that we have here in June, thanks.
Very good, thank you. All right, going down to Julie.
What Ryan failed to mention is the last two nights, he's been driving to Independence with Kim Phyllis and I, so he, no board policies were mentioned, but he was with three women, so that was pretty interesting, so.
He's starting to blush.
He is.
Just a little.
I have to say, I'm just so excited of where we are going in this district. I'm so, I'm sad that we're, we're losing some really awesome people, but I'm, for the most part, I mean, not sad, but for the most part, I'm just so excited of what we're doing, so I can, I can say that now for three years, so. Anyway, but I'm also then concerned, because I took Phyllis on a little tour of my little corridor where I live at 150 and Prior, and Dr. Herzog will appreciate this, but I've got a thousand new homes going around me in about four or five different subdivisions, so, we will be interested to, to talk about this in June, but, and I know that's just my corridor, so, who knows what's going, I mean, other people know what's going over there in Mason, but I'm amazed, I'm kind of excited for my personal self, but a thousand homes was crazy. I took my husband to Parade of Homes, and my first question was, "Oh, where did these kids go to elementary school?" And my husband's like, "Like we would have kids in elementary school." But it was very interesting when they, you know, say Summit Point and Hawthorne Hill, I'm just, so, anyway, but I'm really excited about how, what we're doing here, so, thanks to all.
Awesome, Julie, thank you so much, and our tour was quite interesting, because I'm a lifer, I've been here since I was zero, and I was here when there were 8,000 people in this community, and driving around, I didn't realize how far, I knew we were the largest square miles in the state of Missouri, but I had no idea how far that large square miles meant. We kept driving and driving and driving, and I did, I thought about Chad Herzog and Lee Summit West and everybody out there, we've got some, some great things facing us in the future that I'm sure we'll be excited to, to work in our schedules. All righty, I'm going over here now to Ms. Fritchy. Now, Ms. Kim, stand up and show everybody your T-shirt, because I think it's cool, I got to tell them what it's about, it's here.
Thanks, I know you had a good chance to see it. Um, this month, I had the opportunity to go visit before and after-school services as one of my locations that I visited, and they gave me the shirt. So it says, "I'm officially the best bass."
Carpenter wants to see it, he didn't see it.
"I'm officially the best bass for an after-school services." So, I normally dress a little more formally for board meetings, but I just had to wear the shirt.
Oh, come on, come on.
Well, the first thing I wanted to tell you is, I guess I'll go ahead and tell you, since we started with schools, I visited Richardson Hilltop, Richardson Elementary, Hilltop School, Mason Elementary, and Woodland Elementary this month, and then I did go to before and after-school services, and they gave me the shirt. I loved visiting each of those locations and hearing about the great services that each of those programs provides for our students, so, and I'd just like to thank all of those principals and directors out there for having me and spending time with me, and so I could learn more about your schools, thank you. On April the 17th and 18th, I had a special little invitation from one of our teachers at Summit Technology Academy, her name's Kristen Pearson, she's actually a former student of mine when I taught at Lee Summit High School, but now she's in the Health Services portion of STA, and she invited me to attend the group presentations of her students on, and I heard some great presentations on student stress, diabetes, and school lunches. These students are in the Medical Intervention and Biomedical Innovation Course Track, and they just did some fantastic research, I think Dr. Carpenter dropped in with them on, on one of those presentations too, so I was just really impressed with these students who are, are beginning their studies, actually, in, in medical services. On the other bookend of that, we mentioned earlier that Bob and Julie and I attended the White Coat Ceremony at St. Luke's East Hospital that honored our graduating STA biomedical students, very impressive ceremony, always impressive, and the guest speakers are fantastic. Their accomplishments of these students were truly impressive, I wish you could have heard each student described in their aspirations. They've had an excellent start into the medical professions, and I just wanted to say kudos to those instructors, they're fantastic, so, it's been a fun month of exploration, thank you very much.
Good job, Kim, I always enjoy your energy, and thank you so much for your, such your, your serious passion about our kids in this community, and good job, thank you so much. I'm going down, right back down to Dennis, kind of going side to side here.
Thank you. I, first of all, very quickly, like to congratulate the three high school principals and their staff, and the 1,300-plus students who crossed the stage over the last three nights. Very, very impressive. I, I know, I, I know, I've heard high school principals tell me, it's the greatest day of their life, and it's also the scariest day of their life, because anything can happen in a high school graduation, and normally does, but, but, but such great enthusiasm from the kids, unbelievable kinds of kids that we have across that stage, from number one in the class to, to, not number one in the class, and, and, and I've seen this many times, but each high school has a number of students who have chosen to go into the military, and watch that audience stand and give them a round of applause is, is a tear-jerker almost, and, and, but anyway, kudos to, to the principals, assistant principals, teachers, and staff. I do have one question, though, from my next, is this Ms. Carrie Harden the same Ms. Carrie Harden that just a few short years ago was at Campbell? Wow, okay. You didn't have to go into the numbers, okay? Did you start when you were 15 out there, or what? But no, congratulations to all the, the new employees to the Destination District in the state of Missouri, and I, and I truly believe that. Ms. Hutchinson, you got, take care of Mustang Nation, all right? Again, nothing else, thanks, thanks for everything that's, that's been going on with all the district this week, this past month.
Good job, Dennis. Going over here to Bob now.
Thank you, Phyllis. Primarily ditto to what Dennis said about graduations, I've been to a number of them, and probably a few more than Dennis has, because I was a high school person, and he is absolutely right, if you believe that it can happen at a graduation, it will, and we were very, very impressed that graduations went so spectacularly well, a wonderful group of kids. I think I was most impressed with the number of students that we have at each one of our schools who are taking some form of an advanced class. I, I would venture a guess to say that the total percentage of the whole three schools is probably, what, somewhere between 70 and 80% of our kids? Somewhere close to that, because at, at least one school, I think everybody in the whole auditorium stood up. I was very impressed with that, and that just shows how interested our students are in moving themselves forward, and I think that's great. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go to the Royals game, and you would think, hey, that's a great deal, and I had an opportunity to go with Lee Summit High School's Life Skills Class, and that was an absolute treat. I did learn that a few of their students have absolutely zero personal space, because I had to sit next to one of those people, who is also a graduate, by the way, but we had a great time at the Royals game, I had a blast, it was so much fun, hanging out with the kids and, and kind of keeping track of them, we, we did it right, we had one and a half adults for every kid that went. When we got there, this was, this was a school, school afternoon, and when we got there, there were buses that came in with whole schools' worth of kids and two adults, and I thought, oh, I'm glad I'm not one of them, but we did have a great time, I, I'm very grateful for my son asking me to do that, and I would love to go back again. I also got an invitation, as did, I think, a few of us, to next year's Job Olympics in 2019, so I was excited to put that on my calendar and look forward to attending that, that was another absolutely really cool thing that we got to do, so, it's been, it's been a busy, 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 busy week, but a very satisfying week, and looking forward to leaving the country for 16 days here next week.
Very good, your time away is much deserved, Bob White, and I hope you have a wonderful time. And going over here to Ms. Jackie Clark.
Thank you. My remarks tonight are about the excellence that I've seen in the last month, and, and at one point, you guys are going to actually think I'm insane, and it may be very close to that, but I'm very good at sitting, so that's what I've done a lot of. I mentioned, incidentally, that there were several of the elementary school sixth-grade honor choirs that joined the symphony, what, a couple Saturday nights ago, and let's just say, a special person at Mason Elementary in my life was, was one of the singers there, and, and it was such a great thing, and it was just so great to see my board colleague who attended a university not in this state, to invite the, the music director of Marching Mizzou to come and play with, to direct the symphony in the Missour Waltz, and for those of you who know what that is, excuse me. Yes, well, that's true, I just tried to keep it even keel here, but that, it was a wonderful evening, and, and Madam President was present that evening and was directing several of the young people who were engaged in dance performance accompanying the symphony, and it was, it was just a wonderful evening, it was at Lee Summit High School, and it's just great to have a facility like the Performing Arts Center, which I think my class broke in when, when it was first built. We also had the opportunity, several of us, I think Dennis, you were there, and Kim, at the Hall of Fame recognition for Lee Summit High School in mid-April, and that was just a really wonderful evening to see the, the people that were honored that evening, and, and many of us know them, and let's just... And let's just say, our most senior honoree that night was by far and away the most entertaining of all the recipients. To take nothing away from the other four, he was outstanding and had, has had a career in engineering that was just very impressive. And then on Friday morning, I think it was the fourth of May, I was at the Lee Summit City Hall with our Summit Technology Academy students. There were eight seniors who made a presentation to our new mayor, Mayor Baird, who used to sit up here on this dais, and several of the engineering staff and the city manager on their plans to build and develop some property adjacent to the Lee Summit Airport. And the modeling and the presentation skills that they displayed were quite impressive. All eight of them are college-bound, so they're doing some great work, and they're going to be ready for their particular disciplines when they step into college and then onto the workforce. And as everybody's been mentioning, it is graduation season, and I think Dennis has mentioned it was scary, and Bob mentions it scary, mentioned it scary. I've had some opportunity, I will, by the twenty-fourth, I will have attended eight graduations or ceremonies in this month. And one of them was a penning ceremony and a graduation for my niece, who is a Lee Summit West alumna. And she has a job. She is, she's a summa cum laude graduate, and that's in part because Lee Summit West prepared her for her academic success there. And I know that's a personal story, but I also know that that is true of so many of our kiddos that come through our school system. So, I was very pleased to sit there and know that she's a product of the school district. In addition, I went last Friday night and witnessed five young people at Miller Park Center have a graduation, and it was an incredible experience. And Kim was there with us for a period of time, and it was just amazing. And I want to encourage all of our fellow board members to join in that opportunity next year. I know not, schedules sometimes don't permit that, and I understand. But it was, it was quite impressive, and I congratulate, I know that those students are surrounded by love and caring every single day, and I wish them well for their futures. Obviously, I've been to the three high schools graduations, and tomorrow night, I'm not sure who all is going to be there, but the Summit Ridge Academy graduation will occur, and I plan to be present for that. And then finally, there's going to be a sixth-grade graduation at Mason, and we're going to be sending that special person over to Bronco Nation, and we'll look forward to being present there to see this. Oh, sorry, sorry. Well, it's Bronco after that.
They got to earn their welcome, Bronco Nation.
Yeah, I know. And trust me, this one will earn her way. I do that all the time because, you know, I'm a tiger through life, you know, from sixth grade on, so I get those other animals kind of confused in my head. They're not, they're not my T-shirt collection, I guess, and I probably need to do something about that. I have my West, what do you call them, jerseys, but I got those at an auction. So, you know, those are the things that I want folks to know that we've been up to. And Phyllis surprised me by mentioning that certification, but what she didn't tell you was, in addition to taking on all these new responsibilities and handling them with great grace and engagement with the board, she was also notified that she received her master-level certification with the Missour School Board Association and will be similarly honored next month. So, I congratulate her on that achievement. And I know Bob, I think you're an advanced-level certificate recipient. So, we're going to encourage everybody to follow right along to you and get that certification and that, we've already known that the board is being recognized for some of its efforts. But in order to demonstrate to you all and the patrons of the district that we're serious about excellence, that's the kind of thing that I thought was important to spend time working on that effort. So, that's all I've got now, and I'm just looking forward to next month's activities.
Thank you so much, Jackie. Dr. Carpenter, would love to hear from you.
Yes, ma'am. First off, I'd like to welcome all of the new leaders to our district. It's super exciting to have you all on board, and I look forward to collaborating and working with you all pretty soon as we gear up for the beginning of the year, Board District Leadership Institute. So, I look forward to formally meeting you all during that time and hopefully getting you all on board to assist us in meeting some priorities that the board will have fleshed out early during the month of June. President White, I heard you state you'll be gone for sixteen days.
Yes.
And hopefully, that puts you back almost just in time for the Board Institute on June fourteenth and fifteenth. During that time, we will really start hammering down those priorities again and looking at our work and focusing it for the coming school year. When you went into item nine and you saw thirty-two items in the consent agenda, that's just the symbolic of the fact that we have one foot into the upcoming school year. And those items are reflective of the fact that we're already gearing up for the upcoming school year. One piece that a couple of you attended yesterday, and that was the departure of Dr. Nooks. His last day in the community as president of Longview will be Monday, and on his last day, we'll be signing the MOU relative to Innovation Track. And there's a decision that's been made, and I think it is public knowledge per the chancellor, that they will be transferring a president from the Maplewood campus, Dr. Goswami, who is currently the president at the Maplewood campus, will be taking Dr. Nooks's place for the coming year. So, I look forward to meeting with him and engaging with him because that partnership is a key part of our strategy and the envisioning that I believe we're putting forth for our students in the immediate, short term, I would say. The only other thing that I would add is June second, I know many of you will be joining us at the MSBA Leadership Summit. And it's pretty interesting, we got a call from MSBA stating that they'd heard some things about the work we were doing this year in the area of equity and access for all students. And they said they wanted to have a phone call with myself and Dr. Collier and maybe have us sit on a panel or be a part of a seventy-five-minute presentation, be a part of a seventy-five-minute presentation. And after Dr. Collier finished on the telephone with them and told them all the things that we were doing, they called back and said, we won't leave Summit to be the entire seventy-five minutes. So, I think that really speaks to boards across the state wanting to know more about this whole notion of equitable access and opportunity for all students. So, now, we're putting together a seventy-five-minute presentation inclusive of Dr. Collier, myself, Jackie Clark, and Phyllis Bologna. And we look forward to presenting and hopefully learning from and learning with some other boards across the country, so, across the state. And that has a lot to do with what you all do, and you've given us the opportunity to do over the course of this year. Thanks for what you do. Thanks for your work this week.
Very good. Thank you so much, Dr. Carpenter. I just have a few things to add. I'm excited about presenting along with Dr. Collier and, Dr. Carpenter and Jackie at the MSBA Leadership Summit. I'm really looking forward to my Board President Workshop on Friday. It is a five-hour workshop, and I'm real excited. Tonight, as many of you know, was my first night sitting in the president's role, and was a little sweaty at first, but I have enjoyed it thoroughly. And I have to tell you, a lot of it's because I have such a great board sitting here with me, who has supported me, helped me, and, but I have to tell you, I could not have done it without Ms. Linda Ismer. I had a dress rehearsal today at three o'clock, came in, sat, got myself organized, and thank you, Linda, for everything as well. I just wish everybody a happy Memorial Weekend, a safe weekend, a safe year end to the school. Kids are crazy right now because they're ready to get out of school. Keep them caroused as best you can, and, but celebrate the fact that these, we've got the greatest kiddos there are anywhere. I wish you all the best. Welcome to all of our new administrators, new hires, new teachers, everybody. Look forward to getting to know you. And with that said, I get to take this and do this. We are adjourned.